Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting. You please stand for the invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for coming, everybody. It's good to see everybody. Denise is second. She will not be here.
Mrs. Lingo. Mr. Parsons.
Here.
Mr. Redding.
Here.
Mrs. Dosa.
Here.
Mr. George. Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Rissel.
Okay, we do have two people absent. We asked for anybody to make a motion to, uh...
I make a motion, oh. I make a motion to, um...
Excuse.
Excuse Mr. George and Ms. Lingo.
Okay, Mr. Redding made a motion that was seconded by Ms., uh... What's your name again? Ms. Dosa? Anyway, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Do you have the minutes before you from this February 6th meeting? If you've taken some time to look over them. Anybody have any corrections or alterations or changes that they need to bring forward? Okay, I will consider that silence, that we're good. As for someone to make a motion to adopt as printed.
I make a motion to adopt the minutes as printed.
Okay, Mr. Parsons has made a motion to adopt as printed. Ms. Rissel is seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Correspondence. I have no correspondence other than what was in your packet on the table here. Does anybody else have any correspondence? Okay. We'll move on to guests and special events. No guests, sir? Public input. Anybody who would like to address council? Come on up.
Something that you saw a couple of weeks ago, but it felt like it deserved, um, still in my mind.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Arnett, 7373 Hickman Street. I'm here, uh, just to give you a quick update on the tree commission. I know, uh, Tom Davis was here a couple of weeks ago, but when I watched the video of the meeting, I noticed there wasn't really any comment on this annual report. And I felt like there's some things that really, um, you know, deserve to be, uh, acknowledged. So I'll just go through a few of our quick, our accomplishments from last year. One is that we put a lot of hours into putting this grant application together for a $25,000 grant. Uh, we had first heard that it was going to be, the results would be announced by December 31st, but as of today, they're still deliberating. Probably they got a record number of applicants, would be my guess. Uh, so that's still up in the air. That'll be funding for the next, uh, year, once we receive it. Uh, but we, we did apply for a grant. Uh, we also worked with the city council and city manager to, uh, get a tree ordinance in place. And I want to thank everyone here because you all voted unanimously to support that ordinance. And in fact, there's been one enforcement action since it was, uh, enacted, which is nice to see. Uh, protecting the cities, the trees on public, uh, land in the city. Uh, we had a mulching event, but where we basically just went around and mulched the street trees. We had a really nice big volunteer group, uh, that participated in that, including, um, Mr. Redding and his kids, I think. Did you have a s...? No, maybe that was Dwight's kids that were there.
Right, yeah, Dwight's son, yes.
Some employees from GE and UC students. That's always really gratifying to have these, um, volunteer events. Um, Tom Davis, who was here two weeks ago, has, is highly skilled and highly qualified. And he put in a lot of hours. Uh, he and I together went around and did, uh, pruning on our street trees. Um, and then, of course, we just did the follow-up maintenance and got two outstanding young people to help with, um, watering trees, the newer trees through the season. And, uh, their families supported them, so that was gratifying. Um, and then there's the Tree Commission Academy, which is kind of an ongoing offering for tree commissioners and public servants, people in public works, city, sometimes mayors attend it. Uh, it's a, uh, you know, a 40-hour program that, 40 hours, um, spaced over four segments over a two-year period. So I just want to say that our, the tree commission, even though we're a, we're a branch of the city, we were, we exist because of your ordinance that you passed in 2011. And, and we're, we're appointed by mayor, by the mayor individually. Uh, I'm just so proud of us because we are an all-volunteer group. And, um, as you can see, the volunteer hours, that's very significant, that we had a total of 350 hours accounted for, um, pruning. You can think of Tom and I basically doing almost a 40-hour work week, uh, to do pruning. And that, that to me amazes me because Tom can get over a hundred dollars an hour for his time, you know, as an arborist, but he's donating that time to the city. Similarly, with the grant preparation, it took us a lot of hours, 109 and a half hours is what we counted. And Dwight Wees did the lion's share of that. And he's working 70-hour weeks at GE. But he puts this time into working with the tree commission because he cares about the community. And that's the thing that's so, I feel is so valuable, is that, that we're a small group, but these are people who really care about the community enough to, to donate their time. And I just, you know, I want, I want to encourage you to extend, you know, thanks to those people because we've all heard, you have to thank volunteers over and over and over. And Tom was standing in front of you two weeks ago, and, and nobody said a word. It might have been a little disheartening to him to know that, uh, you know, when you looked at this annual report, then nobody thanked him for the time that he had put in. So I, I just want to, you know, ask for your support in terms of, uh, maybe a little more overt, um, acknowledgement of this, this volunteer effort that goes into keeping our tree program going. So, does anyone have questions or...? Okay, thanks for your time.
Well, thank you, Karen, for coming up and clarifying this and going over it again. It's very nice. And we are not, we may be a little slow on the thank yous, but we are not ungrateful at all. We're very, very grateful. It's so wonderful to have people volunteering.
It is.
Yeah, yes. Oh, by the way, thank you. Okay, anybody else who'd like to address council tonight? None, okay.
You know, excuse me, Mr. Redding. I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, were, were you able to attend the, uh, the cleanup at the wetlands last Saturday?
I guess I should answer that, just so that people at home can hear it. But I, I, um, I'm not really involved with the wetlands project because I feel, you know, that the trees are my thing, so I can't answer that question.
Okay. Yeah, I know we've worked together down there a couple of times. I was unable to make it.
Right.
So, um, yeah, I was just kind of...
Sorry, I don't have an update on that.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, committees and commissions. Beautification committee, Ms. Lingo was absent. So will anybody have any kind of report on that? Mr. Young for Business Partnership and Alliance.
Uh, no report on that.
Economic Development.
Economic Development. I'd like to try to schedule a meeting for 6th, before our next council meeting. Anybody available for that? Um, that would be March 5th. Yep, I'm good with that. Okay.
6:00 PM, you say?
6:00 PM, here.
And that's here, at Council Chambers?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Parsons, Finance.
No report.
Library, Ms. Dosa.
Excuse me. Thank you. I am just going to reiterate some things, and Lacey, since she's here, she can correct me if I'm wrong or if there's any changes. But they're still offering, uh, tax assistance at the libraries, um, at the different branches. Um, the last that we spoke, it was at Grassback and North Central Branch Library. And that they're also still doing Reserve, a Discovery Pass, which is a program, um, for Cincinnati Hamilton County Public Library cardholders, that they can use their library card. Customers can reserve a pass and get free admission to cultural institutions like museums, parks and more. So you have to go log on with your library card, um, credentials and browse the passes by dates or venues. Um, they're still offering after-school meals for the youth, uh, for children ages 1 to 18. And that is for Mondays through Fridays, 3:30 to 4:00, at the Mount Healthy Branch. And that's all I have for libraries.
Okay. About parks?
Yes. Um, excuse me. So on February 15th, um, we had a park committee open forum. Um, and it was at 6:30 here in Chambers. And in attendance were members from council. Thank you for all those that attended. Peggy, Paul, Joe, Bob and Denise. And Mayor Moody and myself were in attendance. And Justin was there for the streets departments, and so was John Peters. Um, and then we also had, um, several representatives from Playground Equipment Specialist, which I'll refer to as PES, which was Eric Schmitz, who's the president and founder. And then Rob Tepey, who's the VP Director of Sales. And then we also had Ron Reedy, who is of the Kefmeyer Foundation, who was present. And many residents of Mount Healthy were here. We had a really good turnout. Um, and what we did was, what I did rather, was I gave a background as to why we needed to have an upgrade to the park playground and its equipment. Um, I discussed the process of what we were going through to help to get that taken care of, which was grants. Um, I talked about the grant that we worked on and future grants that we were looking at and will be applying for in the future. Um, I opened the floor for suggestions, and I opened the floor for the residents to tell me what they thought was needed for the park and how or what we could do to contribute to that. Um, some of the suggestions were really good suggestions, and, um, some were, were like, have a basketball court, uh, frisbee courses, water play areas, um, game and workout, um, room. Um, one was to have water aerobics at the pool, or utilize the pool more for the community, for things of that nature. And then also suggestions were age-appropriate sensory play areas. Um, more park benches, uh, wooden structures, uh, looking into having a natural playground structure and equipment in the park, um, having a little library in the park. Um, there were also discussions about having more special needs and handicap-appropriate areas of play, um, and accommodations, more picnic areas, and utilizing the space that we have to accommodate not only the younger population of Mount Healthy, all the way up to the elders and senior citizens and people that had special needs. So we had a really good discussion about that. Um, Eric Schmidt from PES, um, came and he discussed some of the things that we could do with that space, from down by the, um, caboo, what do we call it?
The gazebo.
Thank you, the gazebo, all the way up to here and the surrounding areas that we have. Um, he talked about having some things that we could do there, some certain type of equipment that we could put there, sensory type, um, you, just utilizing the space that we have in the park. Um, he talked about having some placeholders, um, that we could, he could give us at a discounted rate for the park until we could get equipment in that we wanted to utilize that space, or we could swap it out or get something in there temporarily, considered placeholders, um, until we can get monies in from grants to, uh, put in more age-appropriate equipment or to develop the playground and structure area that we wanted for the park to have. And the pieces that he were describing were pieces that were like showroom pieces or just displays that had never been used, but just for display. Um, and he said that they can also be taken out, they could be put in, we could always add on more, or we could rehab that whole area once we got grant monies. Um, that was a really good discussion and another route to go. Um, the next steps we talked about were moving forward. What are our plans for the park? You know, what are we moving forward towards? What are our goals, long-term goals, short-term goals? What we're trying to do? Uh, and that was talking about consisting of locating and finding other grants, um, applying for ones that are available, finding a extended period of time, having a plan for the park in place before applying for the grants, just doing it step by step so that we knew that once we put these things into the park, that we'd have a somewhat of a longevity of having the equipment and the play areas and the things that we had put into this grant and plan in place. Um, we talked about looking into some of this equipment that Mr. Schmidt talked about. You know, he's going to present us, come back to us with three different options, um, some ideas that we can utilize to go by for the area, um, equipment-wise, using the area that we have, um, his suggestions for the areas that we have. So three different things of that nature, and he's going to present that to us. And then he's also volunteered to give us a tour of the equipment that they had, um, that we could go look at that and see what it was and how that would fit into our park if that's the route that we wanted to go. And then we also discussed, you know, once we had those options, how we would proceed implementing them. Once we received, um, all the things that he talked about, we'd come back to the city and present that again. Our goal, or my goal and the Parks Committee's goal, is to have city involvement, resident involvement throughout this process. Get to a certain part, we have another forum, and we say, this is where we are. This is where we're going. These are the things that we've started, or these are the things that we're hoping to implement, and this is how we're going to move forward thus far. Get more input. It is our way to be very transparent, so that they're part of this process along the way, so that if there's any questions or concerns or things that they want to, you know, change, or just, just having it open so that they feel like they're heard, their voices are heard, and that they can be a part of this process with us. Um, and then how we're going to proceed. Um, so getting the playground equipment and structures in the park. So we kind of ended it there. Does anybody have any questions? That was a lot, so I'm sorry. Questions?
Excellent.
So when, once we get the three options back and they're reviewed, we'll present them to council, we'll present them to the public, so they can see some of the ideas that they have. We'll have another forum. I have to give them at least two weeks or so. So once I get that back, it'll probably be another month or so before we have another public forum, but I will make sure that it's out to the public and, um, so people have enough time to come. And we had a really good, I was very pleased that we had the showing that we did. I would really like for, um, more community residents to come with their children and their family members, because that was asked of the people, so they didn't know if they could bring kids. But yes, bring them. We want everyone's input. So, thank you.
Denise, you've been working real hard on this, and I want to thank you for it.
You are going to get it.
No, I'm serious, I thank you.
What is my name?
Did I just call you Denise?
You did.
Okay. Ms. Lingo?
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then I do have some examples. Um, one thing I want to say, and I apologize. I want to thank Lacey while she's here. I appreciate the library because they have been very beneficial in this process. They have set up in the library. So everyone that's at home listening, in the library, they have like a little dropbox, a little area where you can write down your ideas, children, adults, all ages, and put them in that dropbox, and they'll get back to me. And I have several examples of things that have been put in there. And they have all been a part of this process, and they will be, continue to be. And a lot of these things were put into the plan to see how they would be able to fit into the park. So please continue to put your wishes in there, your thoughts, your, you know, your plans of what you think would work. Um, they will keep that there indefinitely. Um, she hasn't told me when she would decide to take it down, but there is a spot for that at the library, so... Thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? About her name or anything like that? Uh, safety, Mr. Redding.
Uh, just, just one thing. Um, it's starting to get warmer out. I know it's going to get colder and then warmer. We'll have like two or three seasons of winter here in the next eight weeks. But I noticed there are more people out walking, especially in the evening. So, uh, while you're walking, wear something reflective, or if you get caught when it's, maybe the sun went down quicker than you thought, uh, take a flashlight with you. It's just a small one, and turn it on while you're around or in the intersections. So people can see you when, when you're crossing the street. So, uh, just be aware of that while you're walking. Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Good advice, sir.
Yeah.
Questions from Mr. Redding? Okay, schools, Mr. George.
No report tonight.
Okay. Streets, Ms. Rissel.
No report tonight.
Okay. Then we'll go on to the mayor's report, Ms. Moody.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Um, I'd like to, first, um, I'm glad you're still here, Karen. So I talked to Dwight Weesey, and at the last We Thrive meeting, and Dwight has had a heavy work schedule at GE, um, We Thrive, um, wanted to make sure he got the certificate for being a hero in our community for all that he's done. And so he doesn't know when he'll be back in doing things in community because of his work schedule. So I said I was going to acknowledge him tonight, and I'll make sure he gets his certificate. I was part of the We Thrive meeting, uh, tonight. I found it very interesting in that they have a whole, uh, they're working on an active transportation plan, talks about walkability, um, uh, transportation, uh, needs, and things that are out there for people that, um, maybe don't have a car or want to be able to maneuver the community better. And there'll be a man there, a gentleman from the state, March 19th, to go over that review. And some of the things that they've, um, brought up through a community meeting that was last year were items that, uh, were red-flagged as concerns in the community. And it was interesting in that, um, one of the things brought up were the conditions of the roads, we know, and the sidewalks, and, um, accessibility to activities at the park. So I brought up the fact that we had a public forum concerning the playground. Um, We Thrive is very interested in seeing what kind of support can be, um, given to that. Uh, they talked about grant opportunities through We Thrive, the county and the state. So, um, you know, as we processed through this information, it was, um, very insightful to me to let them know that, yes, we do struggle here in a small city with the amount of funding we get for our infrastructure and to maintaining safe, um, walkways and safe ways to cross the streets. So, um, you know, maybe through this process, through We Thrive, we'll have a lot of good information that can back us up, and they can help us with, uh, the way we're funding some of our infrastructure needs. So that, that was interesting and very helpful. Also, talking with them concerning the, um, people that have called and, uh, addressed the garbage issue, which I know every community, I think, in this country deals with. Um, we had, um, Erin was one tonight. Um, there will be a community group resurfacing again to do monthly trash pickups. Um, there'll be, um, you know, different sections of town, and so looking forward to them doing that. We Thrive also said that there's availability for support on that, too. So that was good news. Um, I did get an invitation, um, and I don't know if the rest of the women on council got it through, from Denise Treehouse, considering, uh, there's going to be March 5th at 4 o'clock, uh, Women in Government opportunity, uh, to meet. Um, I think we're supposed to wear purple. And there'll be some networking, so I will be attending that before the next council meeting. Um, find it a good opportunity. It's bipartisan invitation, and so I feel that that's something, um, that maybe some of us here, women in government, could be a part of. Um, also, uh, we did apply for two grants, Scott, we worked together, um, for event grants through the county. One would be for the July 3rd event, and the other one for the skating rink. That seemed to be a great, um, it was a great hit during Christmas in Mount Healthy. So we've applied for those. Those were, uh, the deadline was last Friday, so hopefully we'll get some money. That'll help with our budgeting as we can maybe have those fund through the county. Um, I'd also like to, um, acknowledge Keisha in the meeting and the people who went to it. It, it was really well, you did a great job. And I thought it was, it was, it was hopeful, and, uh, it was good to hear from people. So I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
I hope you can approve the Civil Service Commission tonight. Um, we will maybe need that in the near future. And again, I think, uh, maybe you still have those names in front of you. Uh, James Wolfe, um, Mary Ann Shank, who's already on it, her term is not up, and a new person, Deborah York. We'll need that approved if we could tonight. Planning Commission appointees, I have, um, contacted of the commission, um, of course, the mayor has to be on it, so you've got me, whether you like me or not, I'm on it. Um, and Scott's still on it, and, um, Dave Osterday's still on it, but we needed, uh, to approve two people that had been on it before. I found it interesting talking to people in the planning commission, um, that have had a past experience. Um, they had some good input on maybe we, what we could do, um, better in the future as far as the communication piece and as far as when variances are given, um, what kind of enforcement is there, um, to make sure that when they're given a variance, that is, it is being enforced, because there's some concern on that. I will send these names out. Um, the names I have here would be myself, uh, Scott, Kim Cremens, Jeff Placke, um, Scott and Dave Osterday. I will email those all to you, and maybe at the May 5th meeting, March 5th meeting, we can look at that approval. Also, which will be coming up, is an architectural review board that was suggested to the city in 2016 that I think probably we need to look at in planning ahead for some of development that might go on in the city. Um, we've got some guidelines with that, some people that have done that in other small cities, so looking at that, I think that would be helpful to, to be looking at next. Um, happenings in Mount Healthy. Um, I would just like to let you know that, uh, Fibonacci is being featured at the Crone Conservatory on Fridays. It's called Botany and Brews. I think that's a pretty significant, um, recognition of our small-town brewery. They also will have a seed swap this Sunday at 3:00 PM. They have a, a structure inside where people can swap seeds and get seeds. It's a, it's a really good community outreach. Um, last Thursday, I observed 15 women in Fibonacci where they come and knit and crochet, and it's a really sense of community when they do that. Um, Trinity has a community meal every other Thursday. There's a free meal at 5:00 PM on Thursday. Everybody's welcome to attend. The Mount Healthy Alliance Food Pantry has some needs if you've got canned fruit, pasta, peanut butter, tuna, pasta sides, shampoo, toilet paper, bar soap, toothpaste, cereal, laundry soap and dish soap. Anything that you could contribute to the Mount Healthy Alliance Food Pantry would be greatly appreciated. Those are their needs. And Ticon Farm has volunteer opportunities on the first Saturday of every month from 9:00 to 12:00. Uh, also, um, the school district is, uh, being faced with some financial challenges. They will have a public meeting on February the 28th at the high school. First meeting will be from 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock, open to the public, and the next meeting will be 6:30 to 7:30. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions? Okay, we can move on?
One question.
Yes.
Could you repeat the times for the 28th?
Yes, um, so it'll be at the high school. It'll be from 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock will be the first meeting. Um, you can, uh, if you get on their Facebook page or their website, you can ask questions ahead of time. Probably they would like these questions ahead. And then their next session will be from 6:30 to 7:30.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Move on to the city manager's report, Mr. Bauer.
Yeah, just a few things. Uh, fire department, part-time union negotiations continue to go well. We'll have our third meeting tomorrow. Um, some roadwork updates. So we had our pre-construction meeting for the Forest Madison Project. Uh, they're expecting to get started in March on that work, uh, or to at least starting to order the materials and potentially break ground in March. So excited for that. We had to reschedule the Harrison pre-construction meeting, but I mean, everything's already been established, it'll be at Alita. But, uh, I think it's next, in two weeks from now, uh, we'll have that pre-construction meeting. Um, I attended a signing for our, uh, this is technically for the southern leg of Harrison. Uh, signed, officially signed off on the contract today. They gave everyone these fancy checks, so, uh, excited for that. And then, actually, they stated there, May 31st is when the fourth round of Metro project money, we'll, we'll submit for a project for that as well. So that's coming up. Uh, let's see, we mentioned trash. Speedway, hopefully they've turned the corner. Um, we spoke directly with their upper management. Um, they're supposed to be taking better care of their property now. Clovernook, that got resolved. Things had gotten backed up there as well, so hopefully we'll be doing better with that. Uh, wanted to kind of circle back to the, um, streetscape, um, project that we were going to do on Hamilton Avenue. Made a trip up to Franklin, Ohio. I went with Justin and Paul was able to join us. Very informative what they were, it turned into a much bigger, uh, trip than kind of what we expected. Very informed of what they were, turned into a much bigger trip than kind of what we expected. They were mostly gonna kind of talk to us about how they had used Human Nature as their streetscape planners. But he kind of ran us through the entire project. They're completely reorienting, reorienting their downtown, just the different ways that they're financing it. It's pretty interesting. So come December, I think they're gonna do a grand opening. I'm gonna try and attend it just to kind of see all the progress. There were construction vehicles everywhere. All the work they were done, doing was pretty, was kind of inspiring. So when I kind of get details, I'll let people know, but was gonna recommend that we go with, I think Human Nature will be more in line with what we want. It's much more on the visual side. I think it'll be good for helping us come up with ideas for Hamilton Avenue. But just kind of wanted to see if there was any input as to whether it was Human Nature or Carpenter Marty, if we had, if people had preferences, but my thoughts were to go with Human Nature. Yays or nays?
I liked Human Nature. I thought they brought a lot more options and had a little more vision.
Yeah, if I was, yeah, if I were to pick one of the two, I would, I like Human Nature.
The city manager for Franklin, that's who they used and he, I mean, he only had nice things to say about them. I mean, not that the group wouldn't do a good job, but...
Yeah, and they seem to include a lot more. And, and I don't know if that was because they just had it more than what we were asking or what the scope was, but yeah, it still gave you a perspective of what
Right.
what, what we could do.
Got you. I'll, I'll pull the trigger on them and let you kind of know what the next steps are because I know they'll form a steering committee and they'll, you know, I assume those things will kind of be offline or maybe Zoom meetings, but we'll figure all that out as we go. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Questions? Okay, we'll move on then to ordinances and resolutions. We have no second readings, our ordinances or resolutions, no first readings either. So we're gonna go to old business. I guess the first order of old business would be voting on the members of, what was that committee?
Civil Service Commission.
Yeah.
Civil Service Commission.
I would like to make a motion for council to approve the mayor's candidates, who are James Wolf, Mary Ann Shank and Deborah York for the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, Mr. Parsons has made a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Young, seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. What about the Planning Commission? Do we, you still?
No, I'm gonna send the, the names out to, and the email, so look for it in your city email and then we can maybe look at that March fifth.
Okay, thank you. Other old business, council? None? New business?
I have one thing. Metro Now, and I don't know Scott, if we talked about this or if I heard it on the news, but they are raising their rates from two to four dollars. And that's for each way, so a round trip, say if you're going, if you use Metro Now to go to North Gate Mall, it would be eight dollars round trip instead of four dollars.
Well, they were just at the library, Lacey, and I asked them that. They said they were not upping their rates.
I heard on the news that they were.
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe they are. Because we heard different, now, we know they're expanding their region and they've already expanded a little bit, but okay.
Yeah, they, that's a, yeah.
So the lady didn't really quite know, I guess.
It was four dollars, but she didn't specify that it was round trip or did that?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they said, well, it used to be two dollars, four dollars round trip, but
It's two dollars one way.
Yeah, according to the, yeah, two dollars each way.
It's four dollars, yeah.
Yeah, so it's four dollars each way or eight dollars round trip, I would imagine, so.
It's a, it's a great feature. It is a personal Uber and I, I, it's amazing. I don't know how they're doing it, but they're doing it. It is really something. It's made a difference. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I know I heard it on the news. I don't remember if it was...
I'm surprised. I mean, and I would think that they would up it. I mean, it's been so cheap and reasonable. It is cheaper than an Uber and it's just like an Uber.
Any other new business, council? None? What is your wish then, council? Denise is not here. Somebody make, wish to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn a meeting.
Mr. Young has made a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. George, seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Enthusiasm. Opposed? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.